Everyone would please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing as we open the City Council meeting for our invocation, our invocation brought this evening by Dr. Leanne Dieter Newbert from the First Christian Church.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you please pray with me? Oh God of wisdom and peace, for the willingness of public service to labor on our community's behalf, we are grateful; for the vision of progress towards the worth of each individual in our community, we are grateful; for the hands and feet that will enact the public will defined here, we are grateful. We welcome your presence at this meeting as we gather, acknowledging that the wisdom of the one is amplified by the wisdom of the many. We bring out our personal and shared concerns here where the inspiration of friendship may allow those concerns to be refined and molded by kindness and your insight. Where there are differences, may we listen with generosity, benevolence, and open hearts. In decision-making, may we unite in harmony and thankfulness. Our hearts and minds are open to you and to each other as we invite your wisdom to guide us in advancing peacemaking in our community and inspiring creative solutions to the items on our agenda. And we ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. And we'll go right on into the City Council items, the first item of which is an opportunity for citizens to address items that are not on tonight's agenda. This is an opportunity to put these items on the open public record. No immediate action will be taken on these issues in the fair, in the interest of fair and transparent city government. All issues will be investigated, researched, and addressed as necessary and with the consensus of the City Council placed on a future agenda. Is there anyone that would like to stand and address the City Council about an item not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move right on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening includes minutes of the November 26 meeting, claims for city operation, public housing authority claims, authorization for the city manager to sign claims through the year end of 2018, resolution to write off uncollected accounts payable and payroll warrants, write off of uncollected accounts, resolution to write off uncollected public housing accounts, resolution to write off unclaimed public housing warrants, the unified government contract for senior center funding for 2018, the City Council meeting dates for 2019, appointments to boards and commissions, and the cereal malt beverage renewals for 2019. Is there anything to be pulled by the city staff, by citizens? Questions or concerns from the council?
I had no idea there were checks that didn't get cashed and have to be dealt with way down the line.
Very good. I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Vote please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Kipp?
Yes.
Stevens?
I'm sorry.
Stevens?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Burley?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Onto our regular meeting agenda. The first is ordinance adopting the pay plan. Staff?
The City Council previously presented a final report on compensation and benefits completed by Springsteen. Results of that presentation was the direction from City Council in order of adjusting the wage ranges used to compensate city employees. That had been incorporated into this ordinance. You'll see there's an amendment, our attachment there. We are looking for approval of this ordinance and that would go into effect January 1st, 2019. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Nothing else? Anything, questions, concerns from the citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the ordinance adopting the pay plan for city employees effectively January 1st, 2019.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start down here. Sir?
Yes, sir.
Shaun, how is this updated so we don't get backlog like this again? Is it something you suggest we do more often? Are the steps updated yearly or how does that work so we don't get behind?
There's two ways to do it, one of which is to just look at it on an annual basis or look at the cost of living adjusted. The other is to do this review more frequently, this scale review again, the last time the City completed that was in the early 2000s. We can go through and do that probably three to five years on that kind of depth. So I would say it's probably fault for those items just to make sure we're staying competitive and the cost of living is a good way to adjust that. So we would look to do that as part of probably the budget timeframe. So when we get in later on this meeting here in the summertime as we go through the budget, we'll have some more information about just what the market has done over the last year.
Okay. Thank you.
Vote please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Burley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Onto item number two, an ordinance to amend the compensation for the municipal judge, city attorney, and city prosecutor. Staff?
Just a quick note, there are two letters, one of which is from the municipal judge, the other is on the city attorney, both with their bases and their request for changes in their compensation. The last time this was increased was 2014. The 2019 budget did include a 5% increase for the judge and a $30 increase in order to the city attorney and prosecutor. Happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Any additional? No? Anything from the citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve an ordinance to amend the compensation to the municipal judge, city attorney, and city prosecutor.
Second.
Moved and seconded. We'll start down here. Sir?
Shaun, has there been any attempt to find us a new city attorney?
No, sir.
Okay. Pretty succinct.
Yeah, that hasn't been something that necessarily I think we've looked at certainly with the council direction or input. Happy to look into that for your guys as considerate as you'd like.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Is it common for the attorney to charge a lesser hourly rate for the work they do for a city? Why is this arrangement what it is?
Sometimes, I mean, it just is dependent a little bit. Really, the biggest difference would be the volume. So if they're dealing correctly with the city, we have a large amount of items that would go through the city prosecutor because we do run a municipal court. So I would say that that's just really based on their input and where they're comfortable being at, understanding what their caseload might be privately, and then obviously assuming the caseload that they would take up by just being the city attorney and city prosecutor. I would say it's, I don't know how common it is, but it certainly, it would make sense just from the standpoint that they're getting a lot more volume in terms of cases they're dealing with.
So it's fair to assume that we're a significant portion of his workload?
I would venture to guess that would be the case.
Thank you. Vote please.
Wood?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
No.
Stevens?
Yes.
Burley?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Onto, I'm sorry, number three, ordinance to establish a city manager's salary. We have, this was a work session item that we went through and I don't believe there's any additional staff. Any questions or concerns from the citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve an ordinance to establish the city manager's salary at $129,613.10.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start back down here. Sir? Sir?
None. I think it's pretty straightforward to know?
No. Thank you very much. Vote please.
Burley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Congratulations. I'm glad we have all of those taken care of. We have a very good professional upper administrator, well, we have a great staff across the entire board, so thank you very much. Onto number four, contract for acquisition of InCode Municipal Court software. Staff?
Mr. Mayor and City Council, willing to add chief of police, this is the final component of the New World, total New World transaction was the court system. We came to you about mid-year this year after we did the acquisition of DigiTicket. Our hope was to use the Regis piece, which was the final piece of that original acquisition. That effort has been very laborious and they haven't been willing to really help us out in this ordeal. Their ultimate goal was to have the city pay around $14,000 plus and then they were going to turn around and sell the product to other agencies with no consideration for it. The City of Bonner Springs and then there are some other costs attributed to that. In addition, it's a paid-for-use service, so every time we put a ticket in, that ends up detailing how much the cost of the program is going to be for the year. We have an extensive investment in that program right now. Moving to this new system, you don't have those ongoing costs associated with per use. It's based on, it's ours, we own it. There is an annual maintenance fee that's included. In addition, the system will work seamlessly with the other systems we've already acquired, which is pretty important moving forward.
Very good. Long time coming. Thank you. Anything else from the citizens or from the staff? Nothing? Any comments, questions from the citizens? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the execution of a contract for acquisition of InCode Municipal Court software from Tyler Technologies.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? No. Down here. Sir?
Yeah. Were we working as a city to get some money back? You know, if that ever came to fruition.
I'm deferring the city manager.
City manager? What are your thoughts on that one?
We try to have a fairly open dialogue with both the unified government as well as vendors. The issue being the City of Bonner Springs is not necessarily in agreement as far as having a contract or something in place with this vendor, so we are somewhat secondary to the unified government as far as any remediation to this issue.
Gotcha.
As a concern, so we've tried countless times to try to figure out a solution. I know that unified government continues to work through, trying to find something that will work out there and with New World. I haven't heard whether or not that's gone to any type of litigation or beyond. Other than that, they were continuing to work with themselves. We're just, basically what we've been doing is peeling off some of the things that we've done as part of this system and basically going at it our own. If I ask, and your question directly, we haven't seen any sort of resolve as
reimbursement.
...body back.
Okay. So what we're doing now is, will we be fully switching over to this and all the officers will have access to this from now on?
As far as the court system itself, the court system doesn't technically follow into the police department portion.
Okay. Yeah.
The officers don't directly have access to the court system.
Okay.
But what our systems that we use in conjunction with the court system will feed right into, so for example, the officer will write a ticket, they'll upload their tickets at the end of the night, and it downloads right into-
So I can go into the police station or City Hall or whatever and get my ticket sooner now?
Well, and it's going to print out a copy for the violator.
Okay. And that wasn't, that didn't mean any disrespect. You know, we had some problems with paperwork. It wasn't the officers.
The other thing I'll just point out, this software too, is that right now the city utilizes a software called Fund Balance. InCode is sort of the next step up in terms of our accounting system. This system, as far as InCode with municipal court, is basically we're doing that first with the idea being at some point in time, we're going to need to update our accounting software. So this could be a good way-
Work that, yeah. In progression.
...to actually start to get in some of these bigger things because again, that gets into our utility billing.
Of course.
Things well.
Yeah.
But again, just overall financial management, $20 million is run off of a very unsophisticated system. In comparison to the other software programs.
Gotcha. Moving to our own system, are we open to any litigation from UG? Retaliatory action of us not using their stuff?
We don't have a contract.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
No, we've notified them, they're fully aware that we audit this and-
Correct.
-have to make this transition. So I don't think that there's any concern as far as that back goes.
And we finished to fulfill our obligations of paying the maintenance that was originally agreed by the City Council.
Okay. That's what's getting done.
All those pieces have continued.
Okay. Cool. Thank you, sir. That's, very good. Sir?
Yeah.
This sounds eerily similar to the last time we went through this, and again, I have no knowledge of either side, so we're really, hopefully the due diligence is accurate and we don't swing and miss on that one again, so hopefully this will really get you guys what you need and do wonderful things.
Just a quick question on, I guess you're not going to port any of the historical data over, correct?
Correct.
How long do you see that you'll need to stay on the old system?
We're hoping to start mitigating that within a year. The initial cost estimates to bring this stuff over just from the Tyler piece was $10,000 at a minimum. We anticipated that Regis was going to charge us somewhere in the range of $14,000 minimum just to make the data available to us.
Oh, my gosh.
So from a cost basis, it wasn't effective to do that. We do have an additional part-time court clerk, and so they've been making vast movement towards minimizing our imprint, so to speak. So as the electronic ticketing comes in, they won't be manually entering tickets anymore. So hopefully we'll have more time to start bringing that old historic data back into the new.
Cool.
Is that manually entering all of that data, re-entering it from one place to another?
Yeah. So we've been averaging somewhere around 500 tickets a month and they have to interpret the officer's handwriting and then manually enter it in there. And then, so yeah, it's a very laborious process.
I'll tell you, read through these documents, it sounded like it was fairly harrowing, dealing with this group. Some responses. I'm glad we're moving forward and hopefully get something that's going to serve the department much better.
Sir? Nothing else? Seeing nothing else? Vote please.
Wood?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Burley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Onto item number five, Parks and Recreation Master Plan Update.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, just one space. Interim Director of Parks and Recreation, tonight we bring forward, hopefully to agreement with Landworks Studio, for the Park Master Plan Update, which has not been completed since, or last one was completed in 2007. Tonight we have Shannon Gordon, he's from Landworks Studio, he's here to answer any questions that you might have.
Very good. Do you have something you would like to-
Not necessarily. I did bring our most recent completed document if anybody wanted to-
Sure.
The magnitude of this is a little bit after the 22 parks in Jefferson City. But the process will be based on surveying, comparative city analysis, individual site analysis of the parks, identifying locations for new parks, and then creating designs that would ensure health safety and welfare of the public, looking at things like ADA accessibility, creating safer environments to play, and better security for the park system so that officers, when they go by, can see very clearly what's in there. And supposedly kind of the typical things that we try to run through and do on our first master plan.
And you said it's been how long since we've done this before?
Last one was completed in 2007.
2007, so 11 years plus. And there's a citizen survey component of this?
It would be done through SurveyMonkey.
SurveyMonkey?
No hard copies, just internet?
So, yeah, what we would generate would be a list of questions that then would, the data would come to us and each question would receive the answers, and we would interpret those into needs assessment. So these are the kinds of things, so we would help you tailor this to your community.
Is digital just as effective as-
This one came out as, I'm trying to get a buzzword, there's a buzzword statistically valid, there's a company that does statistically valid surveys and they cost about $18,000 to get them done, and it's done with mailings and digital. This one, we did through SurveyMonkey, which usually costs about $1,800 to $2,000 for use of their software. But the nice thing is, is that this one came out statistically valid despite not having the mailings. So it really, it's a combination of how many people were polled, how many people are in your community, and how many people responded, and there's a mathematic equation that tells it's valid or not.
And that would just go out to our city database or what email database do we use for SurveyMonkey?
Shaun, I believe that was directly-
Would you mind stepping up to the mic? Thank you.
Can we hear Shaun?
No.
It's played back on recording and people won't be able to hear you if you're not in the mic.
I think to get to the root of your question, we wouldn't have necessarily a way to mitigate people from saying they live in Bonner Springs. I'm certain of the fact they do not live in Bonner Springs. That's one of the components of the mail surveys, that they're actually able to validate the address. We do have the national survey that we did complete two years ago, so that can at least provide some basis for this effort in terms of just generally where our parks at from the perception of our residents. What this gets to, it is more about what people want to see within their parks system. So what we would look to do is try to piggyback this effort with things like our constant contact, which I can't remember, several hundred people are on that, and then just word of mouth advertising.
And our paper.
What's that?
And our paper.
Correct. We can reach, I think, a fair amount of people through that. But I think again, to get to correctly your question, I'm not sure if that's exactly right, but, you know, can we go through and make sure that, you know, everybody's just gone to Bonner Springs through email address or validating that probably?
No, I really wasn't worried about that. I can't imagine there's a lot of fraud in that department. I just meant more reaching a lot of people that aren't digitally savvy or care about that. You know, they breeze a postcard and then they respond. I don't know if it, like you said, if it's more statistically valid or if it's not worthwhile. I don't know.
Yeah, I think we could maybe look at, maybe, you know, set some things up, even at like the library, to just point out that the city is conducting this, just so we can please go on to this website and-
Probably put that on signage at the parks, too.
Yeah. Remember how we met at the high school about the-
Oh, yeah.
The history book. I mean, a lot of people-
Utility bill. So we have a lot of avenues to get the information out about the online survey. How many different groups did you have? Was there an RFP for this master plan and how many replied and-
Yes, we listened at the RFQ. The deadline was on the 15th of November. We received three proposals. Staff looked over them, park board looked over them, we have scoring guide.
Decision matrix. And they won. Very good. I appreciate that. Thank you. Any, or was I?
We don't have motion yet. We-
Yeah. Oh, we're just introducing.
Citizens can-
Very good. Any, anything else to add, sir?
No.
Okay. Anything from the citizens? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to award Landworks Studio the park's master plan project in the amount not to exceed $25,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded, and I think I've been doing too much of one-
Sorry? $25,000?
$25,000 total. Not to exceed.
Okay.
We'll start down here. Sir?
No. Nothing.
Sir?
Will this plan include some basis of connecting the parks or walk trails through Bonner?
We'll look at that for sure.
Okay. Okay. That answers the question?
Sir?
Ma'am? Ma'am?
Actually, I did follow up on Mayor's question because I had the same question about the three, he had three different proposals. Do you have a electronic version of the scoring guide that you use? It'd be interesting to see how they were scored and how they all fell.
Yeah. I can set that to you.
Okay, I appreciate it. I don't know, assuming the other council members probably would like to see it, too.
Anything else, sir? Nothing? Anything else? Vote please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Burley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Thank you very much. Welcome aboard. We look forward to it. We have a great park system, as you probably already know. Moving on to item number six, a resolution of support for Windridge Estates Phase Two. Staff?
Amber Mahola, Community and Economic Development Director. Staff is looking for approval of the resolution of support for Phase Two of the Windridge Estates development. The first phase of the project is well underway and nearing completion. It is the apartment complex behind El Potro on Cannon Center. The development group is submitting an application for Phase Two for low-income housing tax credits. This Phase Two will be two 16plex buildings for a total of 32 units. 16 will be two-bedroom and 16 will be three-bedroom, and they'll have the same amenities and appliances that the first phase went through. They've already gone through the planning, rezoning, the first phase, so this is just the second piece of that Windridge Estates development.
Very good. Anything to add from the citizens? Questions? Comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the resolution of support for Windridge Estates Phase Two.
Second.
Very good.[1753.01] Very good. We'll start down here. Questions, concerns, comments? Sir?
Do they have, have they given you an actual date when they thought the first phase was going to open up for tenants?
I haven't heard a sufficient date yet.
Has she gotten a lot of inquiries about the purpose? Because I know, I'm assuming if she's already starting with Phase Two, that she has been popular?
Yeah, they've had a lot of inquiries about when they'll be ready for.
Good. Right here.
Ma'am?
I'm just so glad that this is happening.
Sir?
I'm curious about the, you said the low-income credits? Or, sorry, what was it that you actually said with the phrase? Because I know it matters.
Low-income housing tax credits. It's a state application for public housing.
Okay. So what is the difference in Section Eight style housing and this? Would you happen to know?
So this, they target the rents for the median income, so 50% of the median income will be set at, set for 16 of the units, and then 16 of the units will be set at or below 60% of the median income. So they have income guidelines that they set it, and then that determines the rent.
Gotcha.
Similar to Section Eight?
Section Eight would be like a voucher type of program.
Okay.
So this is just basically saying that whatever the, where the income limit is, or income is at, it's going to be 50% of that. So I think Amber, you have that number out there, don't you?
Yeah. The projected rents are 649 to 770, 50%, and 724 to 825, 60%.
What were those numbers again?
Right here.
All right.
The ones at below 50% of the median income are 649 to 770 monthly, and the ones at 60% of the median income are 724 to 825 monthly.
And those are, is that the rents after the adjustment, or is that the rents pre-adjustment?
After.
Okay. I'm trying to think. I had a couple of questions on this. The buildings that were built next to where, is it called? The, I guess, Nets and Bolts area, are those Section Eight, or were those a similar project? Do you happen to know? I know those were.
I think he's talking about Highland Park.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yeah, Highland Park.
Section Eight.
Those were a similar type of project?
Yeah.
They had funding, I can't recall exactly what was used, what was used for them, but they were a HUD type of housing development facilitator that was in the systems, but I don't know if that's a Section Eight or if that was similar to the, I can look into it or check into it, go back.
I guess my biggest thing is, I'm just curious why we're subsidizing it all whenever we've had, is it a requirement to subsidize right now? I mean, because we've had several projects go in with no subsidization, and, I mean...
We have a desert of low-income housing, don't we?
Yeah. What?
We have a need for it in the city.
And I would tell you, so the city of Bonner Springs isn't involved in this project other than to say that you all support this type of developments, as far as that's concerned. So the state is actually the one that's administering these funds to be used in this way. I guess I just want to clarify around that, so the city's not necessarily...
So we don't have any, I guess it's not a liability, but this isn't coming onto our books with the subsidization of the units?
No, no. And so there's no tax that they've been necessarily, you know, again, it's just something that's between the developer and the state versus, they still need to go to apply to the state, and the state will notify them probably middle part of next year whether or not they've been eligible for these funds. The original Windridge Estates, it actually did call for this total area, that's why this entire area was zoned as R3, so they had had a plan, because I'll tell you that Donna Lilly, who was sort of the key person on this, she was unable to be here today, she had an issue happening with her family. So I'm kind of speaking for her a little bit, but the original Windridge Estates had some significant costs related to that developing up there off of Canaan Center. There was a lot of road that needed to go in, the extension of utilities, it was a great benefit, I would say, to the city with regard to just circling that road and creating a little bit more mobility in that area, as well as just the simple fact that whenever you have more density of people, commerce will pick up.
Correct.
Doubtfully, there's going to be a return on this investment, as the city can, this is a limited return to go shop, those places will fill up gaps, so, again, I just want to make the cities necessarily subsidizing anything.
Well, they are taking advantage of the Neighborhood Revitalization Program for a 75% tax abatement for five years, so we will receive 25% of their increase for the next five years, and then we'll get 100%. So that's no money out of our bucket, that's just not as much money into our pocket.
To fall back on, I don't understand why they would need any subsidization, not subsidization. I'm fine with the 75% and the development credits, but with the rental side of it, I don't understand how they're, like, why they're justifying it. I just worry that we're turning Bonner into a blighted area that doesn't need to be. I mean, when we've already had development come in, we've had a reasonable amount of units, what Preib and Mr. Tyner both put in units at market rate and had absolutely no problem filling them. I mean, I'm in rental, and I've got a waiting list of 15 people deep.
So there's 44 units currently planned up there, and 16 of them are what are going to be eligible for this reduced income due to income limits. So 16 of 44.
Thirty-two.
Yeah, I thought it was 16 and 16.
16 at 50, 16 at 60.
Thirty-two units.
Of 44 units.
The current one going in Phase One is 44.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, stop.
I'm sorry.
Oh, current is 44, we're adding an additional 32 at lesser adult.
So 16 of, this letter of support is for 16 of the new 32 units to be included in this program. And there's 22 in the first program. That means 22 of the apartments are, right now, are market rate.
So almost 50% of the project we're going to subsidize with lower-income folk then? Or we're going to have, they're going to be?
They'll be eligible for a program that helps with people who make less than 60% and less than 50% of the median incomes. Because when you say subsidizing, it sounds like we're giving money out and whatnot.
Yes, which I appreciate the clarification of. Okay, I think I'm beating the dead horse at this point. Release, thank you.
The housing inventory in Bonner, as you're well aware, both rental and for purchase or ownership, having a wide mix of those, like you said, market rate and others, are very important. So I don't, I don't, I don't have the current number on the number of...
I'm worried that Delaware Highlands, or the Highlands area, it stunted a lot of things that we could have done in Bonner.
I don't know about that, but I'm, one of the things that Amber can address more, and she can get you that information, is the inventory of homes at those different levels. And Bonner need, I think Bonner needs to have a wide range of inventory in all the different areas, and we need to have more above market rate, and we need to have market rate, and we need to have below to help a wide range of the different people in our communities.
I think it might be important to point out that that's the way the state is kind of going to this, is that in theory, those apartments are market-rate apartments. So if you move in there and you don't fit those guidelines, you're going to pay market-rate prices. It's, if you qualify for these discounts, then you'll get those reduced rents, and the state makes up the difference. But that way, an apartment complex is not just made up of just individuals in one economic class.
And I understand.
There's a range of apartments in those same apartments.
But what we're doing is we're encouraging, or we're magnifying a potential problem. I mean, because the Highlands cause problems with real estate development in Bonner because of rent rates and things like that. And I know because we had to do a market study in order for, to be able to do some different development plans with some of the people that I've worked with. And, yes, we have an ability to draw lower income, but I don't understand why we would subsidize lower income when Bonner's begging for just normal middle income, and we're bringing Bonner down to, I mean, I went all over the market as well, I'm not trying to single out anybody, I just worry that we're shooting ourselves in the foot and subsidizing it whenever we have, I mean, we're a perfect market, we can do 950 a month rents, I mean, and we can even have 750 or so. I don't see why we would need to subsidize it on two ends from the economic development side, which I don't have any problem with, but then they're also getting kickbacks from the state. I just think they're getting greedy when it's, I know as a development person in Bonner, it's not necessary. I just think they're pulling too much. Just personal opinion, it's not...
We just need more, more development.
Yeah. So, okay, I'll stand on that one. Thank you.
Very good. Other questions, concerns, comments?
No.
Anything else?
Is there, is there any effort to do renewable energy in any of these things?
They're designing this with green standards, as said in the, to support additional tax credits on their applications, so I'm not well aware of what the definition of green standards is, but it is included.
Okay.
There, if you go up there now, you can kind of see what they, what they're building. They're essentially done for the most part, is the exterior, so what they're trying to do is to use sustainable materials, as well as trying to put in high-efficiency appliances, trying to maintain a high R rating, which is your installation rating. So they're doing a lot of things as far as trying to make them efficient units for renters and their big plans.
All right. If I asked for the definition of visibility standards, is it a short answer? Okay, moving on. I will look it up and learn another time.
But it has to do with the UFAES. Anything else? Seeing none, vote please.
Stevens?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Mackey?
No.
Motion passes.
Very good. On to our next item, which is the resolution to approve the Public Housing 2019 Operating Budget. Staff?
Mayor, Council, Tilly LaPlante, Finance Director, I'm sitting in for Carrie tonight. Before you use a resolution to approve the 2019 Public Housing Authority Operating Budget, this budget uses no city dollars, all federal dollars. The council sits as the board for the housing authority. The budget carries over to 2029 months' worth of operating reserves. We've conservatively budgeted operating subsidy from the federal government, not knowing yet what next year's going to look like on the federal front.
Maybe should.
So we've budgeted 80% of what was approved through our operating subsidy last year, or for this year. This year, we received 94.7% of what our operating subsidy calculated. We also get cap funds, and those funds, we're not sure if we're going to get next year either. So in the proposed budget for 2019, we aren't, we're carrying those to 2020, so we're not budgeting to spend those. The capital funds that we received this year, we're budgeting to spend next year on bathroom remodels and countertop installations.
Very good. Thank you. Anything to add by the citizens? Questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve a resolution approving the Public Housing Authority 2019 Operating Budget.
Second. Moved in second, and I'm not sure where we started last time, but we'll start down here. Sir? Sir? Ma'am? Ma'am?
Sir?
May I tell you, you mentioned about, because you're not for sure if you're going to get the capital, approval of capital funds from HUD. I know you budgeted for bathroom remodeling and such, now is that going to depend then, whether you follow through on that, or what?
Those are funds carried over from last year and that we have received this year. So we're not...
Gotcha, so they were received last year, scheduled?
Money we haven't already received.
Gotcha. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Very good, sir. Nothing? Vote, please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Do we need to now take care of this resolution to authorize the cancellation of certain unclaimed Public Housing Authority warrants? We already did that? Okay, very good.
I think that's the one wrong.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think it was in here, just she had forgot to attach the paperwork to the...
Very good. Sorry, didn't want to make a mistake, and I did.
Don't worry, I asked three times about it.
But I'm able to. On to the next section, our reports. City manager's report.
Just a reminder, City Hall, City Offices will be closed Christmas Eve, which is coming Monday, and then Christmas Day, Tuesday, trash will be delayed through that week, and then also on January 1st, which is a Tuesday, City Offices will be closed, another delay in your trash can recycling. Also want to point out, the city is currently in an interlocal agreement with the Unified Government Providing Services in what's called the Loring Services Area. That is going to be coming to an end. I have notified the Unified Government that that actually turns out at the end of the year, so we're trying to work with them diligently. If you recall, that agreement, which has been in place for a number of years, was somewhat forgotten last year after a series of automatic renewals. The Unified Government wanted to just go and do that for a shorter period of time with their intent of reviewing exactly what's in that agreement and the costs associated with the state bringing its providing services there. It appears as if that wasn't done on that end at the end, so I'm just pointing that out because if we are without an agreement to provide services in that area, it creates jurisdictional issues both for public safety, but as well as just our ability to go out there and service that area as far as any snow plowing and things like that. So I just want you all to be aware, I'm working with Unified Government to try to rectify that as swiftly as they want. And then also, the question came up with health insurance. We are basing health insurance changes as far as moving to that 80%. We would just be doing that administratively with your guys' blessing from the last, the previous meeting, to say that family coverage is will go to 80% from where they were at previously. So I just wanted to make sure that was addressed so that everybody knows, in fact, we're here first, we'll go to that methodology. Beyond that, that concludes my report. Happy holidays, everybody.
Very good. On to City Council items, and we'll start down here, sir.
I have nothing, just happy New Year's merry Christmas.
Very good.
Safe holidays.
Very good.
Anything for me? Safe holidays, but I do want to know what we're doing about renewable energy.
Very good.
Just keep bugging about that.
Good. Sir?
I was curious what we need to do to get Thibault Talk as our actual city paper, since it's in our city. It's a good question.
As far as printing the legal prescriptions and that kind of stuff, we have to publish weekly.
Yes, sir.
We would have to start publishing weekly and mail, and we would have to be printed weekly for over a year before we can be considered as an option.
An option to do that. Well, thank you. I appreciate it. That answers the question. They're glad.
Anything else?
Merry Christmas to everybody.
Very good. Well, on to the mayor's report. As far as the mayor's report, I'd like to let everyone know we had a very nice employees' appreciation and holiday party gathering this last week, and it certainly strikes me, I'm very proud of the entire city, not just one department or another, but some of the police were able to be there, not as many as what I'm sure wanted, but it's great to see the participation from all the different parts of the city, and it looks like we have a great group of people that work together very well, and hopefully that will continue into the future. This being also our last meeting of the year, not only Merry Christmas, but Happy New Year to everyone. The state of the city is going very well. We're looking at having some great opportunities in the beginning part of this next year. Some of the things that are coming in the near future are, of course, the PlayStation as well as the City Hall, and we'll be working through that. It's quite a process and we're well underway. We had a nice gathering of the Wyandotte and Johnson County Mayors Association at that holiday banquet. We're able to network with a lot of the local mayors and that's probably the biggest value that group has is the networking and the commiseration. A lot of communities have a lot of stress going on or a lot of different aspects and so it's nice to see that how well-respected the city of Bonner Springs is for the different areas of our administration. That's where I heard that we've had some new recruits come to Bonner Springs and I heard about that there, so that's great. Congratulations and I would love to get that kind of feedback. We continue to have open communication with Mayor Alvey and Mayor McTaggart, other mayors in Wyandotte County. Some of those things are what we're discussing, the cooperation is a good way to put it, between the different aspects of our local governments, them being unified. Unless there's any other questions for me, we really enjoyed the mayor's Christmas tree lighting. It was... I was thankful for all of those that attended and the great job that the Parks and Recreation did. If you would compliment the people who put up all the lights, I think it's better than it's ever been. That's as well as all of Candy Cane Lane or the Candy Cane Lane, Decreed Candy Cane Lane on Oak Street. It's very nice and I know I've heard a lot of comments, people appreciate that. It may be considered standard operating procedure in the city, but it makes a difference to the quality of life in Bonner Springs. Oh, yes, it was mentioned in the city managers' report, but thank you very much. We'd like to congratulate both Amber and Sean for completing the KU certif... The University of Kansas Certified Public Managers Program. It is, from what I understand, a nationally-recognized emblem of management excellence. So of course, I'm very proud of you for doing that and thank you. Not everyone has those, as I understand it. So that speaks to the level of commitment, professional commitment we have in our administration.
Yeah, don't forget about Chris.
Oh, and Christina also is now... That was certified?
It's in there. Municipal clerk.
Yes, the municipal clerk certification program from another wonderful educational institution in the state of Kansas, Wichita State. So congratulations. Seems to be someplace missing.
There were levels in that.
I don't see any other universities mentioned, but on to our last little piece.
We've got a few ideas for Kansas City next year, so...
I'm sure they... I'm sure it'll be wonderful.
I'm moving down a little farther.
I don't want to get into who pays who.
Our last... My last order of business or I would like to make mention of in the mayor's report, we have a young man here completing a school requirement for a social studies class. He's a nice young man and he came all the way to the city of Bonner Springs from Baser to fulfill this educational requirement. So it's always nice when...
Is it due tomorrow?
Yes, you go.
I understand this is 10% of Lake's score and so Lake is my nephew and I'm happy to have him here tonight watching our meeting. And he's been invited to all of our meetings except this is the only one he seems to have. He didn't want to come.
He's been busy with other homework.
Yeah, I guess so. Yes, there you go. But other than that, if there's no other questions, we are adjourned. And I will sign your piece of paper now.
Can I take a picture?
We need to sign these. Is there no nepotism in homework?
I wouldn't sign it.